Good evening, everyone. The Lupier Community School Board of Education is now called to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. LaBarre, would you please stand as we pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. LaBarre.
Oh, almost took over the whole table. That was amazing. Look at my power.
So, we will head into our next agenda for this evening, an Alternative Use Superintendent Andre.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of the school board, the central office leadership team, our athletic department, with many student athletes who have benefited from this next local group, it's my pleasure to recognize in a very special way Jim Reel's Friendly Auto. Now, for the board, they've been here for a number of years. We recognize that many of the district improvements, whether it's facilities or donations to student groups, you know, many of those improvements, many of those engagements with our kids would not be possible if not for the film profit efforts of both our for-profit businesses and also our community groups. The Quanis, the Optimists, the Rotarians, and are one of our original partners in the Leader Fund. Exactly what I was getting at. Thank you, Vice President. Sorry. I didn't want to forget you. Just thinking of you. Who's that gavel once in a while? Not on me. No, no. Good point. Thank you. But in our related, in my fourteen years as superintendent, I can say that Jim Reel, the Friendly Group, is in the top one percent of local businesses that are as connected to Lupier Community Schools as any of our partners. While this recent scoreboard donation would not have been possible without Friendly, I'd love to say this is the first time they've stepped up and given both their treasure, time, talent, and commitment to Lupier Schools, but that would not be true. Thousands and thousands of dollars have been contributed to our district by the Friendly Auto Group, and we are the benefactors of their generosity. So, on behalf of all of us here at board level, the central office team, and our entire community, when you have a community school district, built in that title is the word "community", and that means that we can't do it without, without, without people like that. And so, joining us this evening, representing Jim Reel, are Bob Reel and Chris Burns, and we are just excited to, on behalf of this board and our district, give to you a certificate of appreciation in recognition of not only this nomination, but the many, many years of continued support of LCS and, to Craig's point, one of our original major sponsors for the Leader Fund, which in total, we're reaching close to a million dollars now. This is one there.
We're climbing the ladder.
Climbing the ladder. Of community groups that are giving back to our kids, many of whom, their own children have graduated, long gone from LCS, but they're that committed to their, their community school district. And Jim Reel is certainly one of the founding and foundational businesses that we are blessed to call our partner. So, if you would join me in thanking them, I'd like to invite them up here. Hold the big check.
How many rolls pages is this?
I'll give you that. Do the heads up. Is it right side up? I think so. Does that make you laugh? All right. Plaque.
Mr. Andre, we're gonna get one with the soccer bladers.
Yep. Oh, great, 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 great. Yes, let's do that first.
We were just kidding.
How the head coach should skip out of being up here?
Yeah.
We're looking through right there.
Hey Chad, that's why I stepped away too. You're the eighth best-looking person. Stay out here. Yeah, which kid's yours, Chad? One more, yep, one more. Get up here with the certificate. Little school district, Jackie Balm. All right, thank you, guys. Forget the cash that one.
Thanks, guys. Have a great evening.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to take the table out again. Okay. Next, we will head into the present to school. So, Alternative Use, you can see your turn.
Thank you, Madam President. It is mine distinct pleasure to introduce our program director, Miss Stephanie Hedy, and she will be presenting this evening on goal 1A. Hedy, the floor is yours.
Why, thank you, Mr. Andre. Good evening, guys. How are you?
Good.
Good. Good to see you, nice to see you.
Stephanie's got a big check. We're always.
I know, you're fantastic, fantastic. Now, huh? All right, so I'm just gonna give you a little background at the beginning about myself, and then go into Kids and Company programs. So, in the fall of 2009, I was hired as a tuition preschool assistant teacher with Kids and Company. Then, after that, I was an ECSC here for about a month and a half. And unfortunately, there were no ECSC positions available for the following year, so I took the librarian specialist for two elementarys, lunch and churro. And I did that for quite a few years, and I also did before and after school lunch to get some of our programs. Then, in 2016, I was offered this current position as Childcare Site Director with Kids and Company, and it's my all-time favorite.
So, next year's gonna be ten years.
Nine years to go.
Nine years.
Yeah. I'm five-five.
Piece of job.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
So, a little bit about Kids and Company background. So, staff and students within Kids and Company programs, we Kids Two, which is our childcare role in Warner's site, three- to five-year-olds, and we have about five staff in that classroom, and it varies, they could open, close, implement midnight shift, and up to eighteen students. And that's a Monday through Friday traditional calendar. Tuition threes and fours, they have an AM and PM option for preschool. Three-year-olds are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, AM and PM, and four-year-old tuition is Monday through Thursday, AM and PM. And both classrooms have, for the three-year-olds, sixteen in each, and for the four-year-olds, sixteen in each. Now, our three, our three GSRP classrooms, we have nine staff and fifty-nine students. So, we can have up to twenty students per GSRP classroom, and we almost hit that sixty mark. We are next year, we're gonna hit sixty. Two ECSC classrooms, they are half-day, Monday through Thursday, traditional calendar, and there's about seven staff in both classrooms combined. Our big kids sites, we have currently four locations, but in the fall, we're gonna have five locations. We're actually gonna add, at Rollin' Warner, the middle school after-school for the fifth and sixth graders. Not sure I'm stacking yet, but I'll give it. All right, next. So, our benchmark, as Mr. Andre said, was 1.1A. Eighty percent of Lupier Community Schools preschool-age students will be proficient on the kindergarten readiness assessment. So, one hundred percent of our teachers, their students will implement best practices, reading and math essentials, instructional practices, and early literacy as measured by classroom observations. They also will identify students who are at risk of not meeting the kindergarten readiness standards as measured by progress reports or the kindergarten assessment. Provide one hundred percent of parent strategies to support student at home as measured by parent surveys. Preschooling students proficient on the kindergarten and readiness assessment. So, how is our preschool staff supporting the, supporting the district goals? By various options. We have professional development throughout the school year, three-county-wide for GSRP Head Start Tuition, including ECSC. That's how, how's at, at tech. Teacher-to-teacher instructional rounds, we've been doing this for three years with Crystal White. That's when Crystal and I observe within each classroom with three other staff members, and I get coverage for those three staff members. It's similar to the administrative instructional rounds, but it's teacher, they actually get to see what the other classrooms are doing. We have early literacy essentials, literacy cohort through the ISD. This year was fabulous. Crystal White will talk more about that in a little bit. We have collaborations as a team, six times a year, and we always appreciate the guidance from learning coaches as well as the LCISD staff. So, with that said, I'm gonna let Crystal White, early literacy consultant, and coach coordinator with the LCISD, she'll go more into depth on the instructional rounds, early literacy essentials, and the cohort through the ISD.
Thanks for having me. I'm also a parent of two children at churro, a kindergartner and a fifth grader. So, we will appreciate that before and after care next year when she goes to Rollin' Warner, and a working mom needs some latchkey services. And then, I also have a child going into eighth grade next year, which will be transitioning into summer. So, lots of kids in all the different schools.
Keep coming.
We will get. We're done. We're done. We're all done.
I only disappointed you. We don't want you to proceed with your presentation.
So, Stephanie was talking to you about instructional rounds, and it's been going really well, having them in the pre-K building. Actually, Lupier Schools is the first district in Lupier County that has been hosting instructional rounds in their preschool programs. We've been doing them throughout the county and throughout the state in K-12 classrooms, but that I know of, especially in this county, Kids and Company has been the first early childhood program to host instructional rounds just within their pre-K building. So, that's something to be said for. We do two different types of rounds. We started two years ago with doing the teacher-to-teacher rounds and elementary and secondary teachers love doing that, where you're just observing in college classrooms and you're looking for certain instructional practices. We've had a literacy focus for the last couple of years, so we started with taking the early childhood lead teachers and also their assistants and finding coverage, and then walking through them with a, with a schedule where they're in each other's classrooms for like ten minutes at a time, and they're looking for specific practices. That's been very beneficial. And then, we do a debrief afterwards, and we kind of come up with what are our strengths, like building why, and then as far as some next steps goals to move forward. And then, last year was our first year that we did kind of like the administration instructional rounds, where we brought in elementary principals, and then some of the cool teams who had come into, and we, they had a chance to go into pre-K classrooms, which was, I'm sure you guys can agree, it was pretty eye-opening to see what happens when you're, when you're teaching three- and four-year-olds in these literacy practices. And they did the same thing. They looked for commonalities as far as like strengths within literacy practices, and then next steps. And then, whatever we, whatever like strengths and next steps that we gleaned from these instructional rounds, that's what we use for like the next year's kind of like school improvement or program improvement. And that's what we kind of, every time that we have building why, like professional learning time, like training, that's what we focus our training on. So, you can see, like, we just, we hosted rounds this year and through the admin rounds and through the teacher, teacher rounds, some of our strengths where we saw like common literacy materials throughout every classroom, things like classroom libraries accessible to students in every room, and then also common alphabet charts in all the rooms for kids to access and utilize, and then like name charts in all of them. And then, some of our next steps this year that we identified, which it's crazy because it just, you know, it's, it's two times in two different months, two different kinds of year that say the teachers are going in each other's room, and then a few months later, the admin are going in each other's rooms. But a lot of the strengths in the next steps that came out from both of those debrief processes were, were common between the two of them. It didn't matter if it was teachers looking for things or admin looking for things. And so, kind of a next step, which is nothing new to us, is we knew we wanted to continue our focus throughout the building around writing. So, we, we touched on it a little bit this year, and we know that next year, we want to launch like a year-long book study with the pre-K teachers and assistants. And so, we're gonna be working on continuing our work with the interactive writing and then the scaffolded writing. Great things are happening. And so, this, everything that we do as far as our, our literacy instructional practices, they're connected to our goals that we, that we gleaned from the instructional rounds. And so, everything comes from the ten essential practices for the pre-K classrooms, that's all common. Every time you hear presentations from the different school buildings, you probably hear instructional practices, literacy practices, but it's really nice because everything's aligned. They have pre-K practices, they have K-3 practices, they have four, five practices, they have six, twelve practices. So, really, little kids all the way through seniors, like these literacy essential practices are highly aligned to research. And that's what the whole district is really like built from their literacy school improvement goals around. These are just some fun snippets of some of the things that we did this year when we got together for our, our monthly one-hour professional learning opportunities around writing with the staff. And they, they set their own individual goals, they do some self-reflection, they tell us what they want to work on, and then we kind of just go from there. And then, next year, you know, writing is a tough one, not only, you know, just for pre-K students, but for all students. And so, we can't just spend a few hours on it. We wanna do it well. And so, next year, we already chose like a mentor professional text that we want to use for professional learning with our pre-K teachers. Another thing that I wanted to talk about is really our, the pre-K teachers at, in Kids and Company, they're really invested in their, their professional learning. And this year, we launched Countywide. It was hosted from Lupier County Intermediate School District, but we interpreted all pre-K teachers in the county, three- and four-year-old, pre-K teachers, and we hosted a literacy professional learning cohort, which, it hosts a series of professional learning opportunities at, at tech, and we have up to fifteen-plus hours of P throughout the year in about two-hour increments. And we focus on specific literacy essentials from the pre-K practices. And we had a great turnout, very, I think your staff, we had amazing turnout from all the participation for the teachers from Kids and Company. And that's something to be said, because we had a huge kickoff at the beginning of the year, and I had about ninety-something early childhood educators from around the county. But then, you know, things dwindled. Participation dwindles, and then we go session after session, and then it starts going to sixty people show up, and maybe forty people will show up consistently. But I would tell you that participation from Lupier's GSRP teachers and tuition teachers, and ECSC as well, early childhood special education, they had close to one hundred percent participation. So, that was really great. We also had really great participation from, in like city community schools, you know, teachers, EC, early childhood teachers, and Dryden Schools. So, that's just great. The teachers, we got a lot of great feedback from the early childhood teachers, and they said like, sometimes like, they're not offering this professional learning, you know, for, for pre-K teachers, and they just, they just wanted it. They were asking for it. So, I wanted to show you a quick video of kind of like the recap of some of the focus areas that we, they were learning about this year. So, you will see that we also offered incentives for them to participate. What's nice is a lot of the preschool teachers, especially GSRP, they don't have students on Fridays, so it makes it a great opportunity for them to be able to attend professional learning. So, they attended on Fridays, and then when they came, we gave them free stuff. You'll, you'd be surprised how much it will entice teachers to show up if you give them a bin of free books, or even chocolate. Or chocolate, yes.
I need lots of that tonight.
She did not. She has something for you. Yeah. Yep, so you will see that they did ask for incentives. They collected, they were able to take away some books for their classroom library, and then also some read-alikes to read with their students. And then, the last thing, oop. Oop, no, don't do this. Don't do that, okay. Talking about classroom libraries, we talked about how part of our literacy cohort, we focused on helping pre-K teachers build their classroom libraries. But also, two years ago, classroom libraries in Kids and Company, that was identified as a, as a need, a focus area from instructional rounds. We had admin, the admin team and pre-K teachers go to each other's rooms, and one thing that was gleaned from that was, wow, they have a lot of books, but when you look at what an elementary teacher's classroom library looks like, there was significantly less in a pre-K classroom library. So, that was identified as a focus. And so, this current school year in the fall, Kids and Company received ten thousand dollars from Lupier ISD for the purpose of creating diverse and engaging classroom libraries. And so, we have seven classrooms that each received about fourteen hundred dollars to kind of beef up for the classroom libraries. They, of course, they can purchase books, but also things like shelving, cozy seating, decor, organizational materials. There's a lot of research that supports having a, an engaging and high-quality classroom library, especially some of my favorite before and after pictures. So, you'll see before, it was very good for building, and then after, that's my most favorite classroom library. I said GSRP classroom. Yeah, so I always show this one as an example. This is a pre-K room, like, that's so awesome. So many bins of books. And then, we have an ECSC room. Yeah, so those kids love this too. And then, these are some other examples. And of course, they get to get the great literacy props and puppets to go along, and all those awesome things, so. And then, in addition to that, the previous year in twenty twenty-three, Kids and Company received a fifteen thousand seven hundred dollar grant from the Great Start Program in conjunction with Lupier ISD. And that purpose was to increase access to literacy materials for preschool families. There was only, I think, three preschool programs from around the county where they had access to like a school library, where they could check out books and take home because of situations like, you know, Kids and Company being housed in a middle school, or maybe they're in a, you know, an old, like an admin building, you know, so it's away from an elementary school library. And so, GSRP took some, some money, I'm sorry, Great Start took some money, and they allocated it across the county for the purpose of, okay, you, you don't have access to an elementary school library, like, let's make one, or let's make a loved-in library. And so, this really helped promote parent engagement and then literacy interactions in the home. So, just like elementary students do, they're able to check out books each week, and expose preschool. um, and expose preschoolers to like an abundant amount of diverse and engaging literacy materials, um, and then take home. So the students now get to take home books. I think they go to the Roland Warner School Media Center. Yeah, so pictures here, examples of the students with Ms. Christie in the library. And the right picture where the caterpillar is, that's all of our books that we purchased as well as the caterpillar decoration. But in the fall, our plans are to even make it even cozier for the students. Um, we're gonna actually be, where those computers are currently, we're gonna have that whole section. Mr. Stevens and I talked about it and I'm gonna put just a rocking chair for Ms. Christie, um, an easel for the big books, um, a little cozy lamp that you can turn on, high, medium, and low, um, another graphic tree lamp on the wall, and some fun little seats for students that get really fancy and they can't sit until it's into a book more than two seconds. Yeah, so it's just a really nice opportunity for them. We had to get creative. At first week, some, um, early childhood centers were like, oh, we have an extra room, we have an extra space that we can make it, uh, you know, just a pre-K library. Well, we didn't have access to that. And we were like, we have access to a middle school library. Could they give us a little section? And maybe we like, you know, put like a fun caterpillar over it and then identify, this is the early childhood section. So. It's nice because we have reading muggles as well from the middle school that come down. All right, so our benchmark data, you can see on the right, it's going to be the 2025, 2425, and then on the left is the year prior. So if you see there's a checkpoint number one, two, and three, so it would be fall, winter, and spring. You might not see an increase from the winter to the spring, but boy, can we see the difference in, a student could have possibly five letters at the very beginning of the school year and could have up to 41 at the end of the school year. Same as sound recognition and counting. These teachers have been doing an amazing job on the experience at Crystal. Where did she go? Sorry. From what PD she has provided us, uh, the teachers have worked so hard to make sure we have a lot of students meet that checkpoint percentage for the, the, like, the fall, sorry, spring. So that's checkpoint one, two, and three for 23 and 24 and 24 and 25. And then I'm gonna do some program highlights here. So our new and approved playground, yay for our staff and students. We absolutely love it. Even the staff, they catch them swinging on the swings or the little sliding thing, even the musical notes, the drums. Another, um, highlight is, we have a certificate of recognition from Great Start Quality. So Great Start Quality is like a star rating. It's like one through five. They actually switched it this year. It's going to be, you'll see the four circles, um, on the right-hand side. So reflecting on quality is like star number one. And then number two is enhancing quality. And then enhancing, enhancing quality validation is number three and demonstrating quality number four. We're number four, demonstrating quality. So we actually received an onsite observation from a Great Start Quality staff member, and all of our classrooms have, were included in that and we had the top match. So we, that's demonstrating quality.
That's awesome.
Yay! All right, and I had to end it off with our playground ceremony picture of all of my wonderful, hardworking, dedicated staff, um, for all of our programs. Um, I would also like to thank Crystal for all your hard work and dedication for our preschool program PDs throughout the school year. I would also like to thank all of my staff that I get to call team and family. Um, it makes my day worthwhile coming to work, to see their smile on their face even when they have a rough day. I would also like to thank the Coltee for all your support and dedication, the Board of Education. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for all that you do for the peer community schools and all of your community staff for letting us be a part of the peer community family. We really appreciate it. And I'll end with a little something for you guys. I was in the childcare room today with my little three to four-year-olds. They really wanted to make pipe cleaner beaded bracelets. So you all get one. You can wear it or you can hang it in your rear mirror in your car or you can just put it on your desk.
Your special talent.
Thank you. We'll make sure they get on.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions or comments for this one?
No, I, that was fantastic. I love that we're spending the time doing the things that we're doing in K-12. We're, we're doing it also in pre-K, like the instructional rounds, just all of that need in that age range shoe is perfect. And, you know, thank you for everything that you do as well. I mean, these kids are little sponges. I think they want to learn from Christmas. But, and, and that's just time to do it, so.
Pre-K teachers are so awesome to work with. They are fun. They're like different than elementary and secondary teachers. They wanna learn, but they have so much fun.
I, I am impressed on their dedication, the, of wanting to soak in the media themselves. That's amazing. Like, I know they have a hard eight group to constantly, I don't wanna say entertain, but teach and entertain throughout their time that they get to spend together. So them also wanting to use their extra time to go educate themselves to do a more amazing job. Of that is, that speaks volumes for the people that we have working there.
Absolutely. When I started this position over eight years ago, PDs, staff meetings, it was like crickets. Like, no one was talking. And after media year, holy cow, the engagement between them just in an hour meeting went spectacular. And it's continuously doing that. So I'm very proud of the staff that I work with.
See the change for the books, the book area from the before and the after. And I love that you put the hungry caterpillar and, you know, puppets and just different ways to engage the kids and to get them involved into reading. I mean, we just, we know how important it is 'cause it's, you know, it's a lifelong thing, is reading and learning and, uh, getting them at that age and getting them excited about it, letting them hold an actual book, not just a tablet, but just turn the pages. I mean, that is just, and to soak up that knowledge, as Summer alluded to, all those little sponges. And I just love what you guys do over there. It's so fun, so fun. Thank you so much.
They love to take the books home from the Roland Warner Media Center. So every other week we go down there, they could take two books home, bring them back, check out another few books.
And I actually really love that we found space in that media center for that we go because they get to see a library, even though they just kept their section by exposing them to the library.
They get to check out the books too. They have their own card and they get to look around the bookshelves, pick their favorite book. It may be the same one each week, I don't know. Then they go up to the desk and check it out.
And they're also the school of the big kids.
Yes.
That's cool.
Yeah. They get the reading button. Yeah, I love that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we will head into our public comments for this evening. A board meeting is a meeting of school district business held in public and is not a public meeting. The board is not going to respond to those making public comment. Fault will direct the superintendent to follow up with the presenter. Thirty minutes is set aside for public comment, so each presenter is being asked to keep their comments free. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and asks the presenter to be the spot qual of anything they may comment about. Karen Bruschakal?
Hello, welcome back from my annual June comment. But before I get into that, I just wanted to say really quick, um, I was watching, today I was watching the meeting from last month and it's kind of surprising how much this lasted, so I was perhaps exposed to in your buildings growing up here. Hopefully it wasn't the kind out in the air, um, with, um, the high school and rural and kind of thing. Um, I also wanted to say it would be nice if, it, it's becoming common now that agendas and draft minutes are put on websites. And at least when I looked today, I couldn't find those. And so it just helps the public be able to say, hey, I wanna go to this meeting or not, um, and be able to see what happened in the last one, so. And I also wanted to comment on, in reading your public comment policy today, you guys may not know this, it's highly unconstitutional. And I know that because I got to work with the FIRE Foundation, the Foundation for Individual Rights and Expression. Last year, Len Moore Township passed a highly unconstitutional public policy. So I highly suggest that you go to the FIRE Foundation website and look at that, um, and perhaps revise that. Anyway, I'm here to talk about fireworks cleanup. And, uh, just to recap for anyone who doesn't know the story, back in, um, July, right after the July 4th fireworks in 2016, I discovered that at Chatfield and all around Mott, just acres of, um, trash from the fireworks spectators was mowed in. And then the next day I went across the, the streets, I saw some stuff blowing at Roland Warner and all of that had been mowed in. And the amazing thing was that year we were in a very severe drought and the grass didn't even need to be mowed. But that year at Roland Warner, they, um, the mowers chopped up all kinds of metal cans, clothing, socks, um, all kinds of cups, plates, just everything that food can come in, they just chopped it all up and left it in the grass. And so I sounded the alarm, the city, to the schools, and got a lot of feedback. Why did I even care? Why does it matter? Just let it go, kind of thing. But then they said, oh, well, it'll never happen again. We'll make sure it never happens again. And that happened again the next year. Right. And so I've been a part of, you know, some folks in the community getting together to fix this and, um, and doing it ourselves for the most part, right? Um, and there have been other years. I think it was three years ago that I, I had a big group coming and we started at Mott and I had, there was a group that was gonna start at Roland Warner at nine cleaning up. The mowers were already there at 8:30 and they only spoke Spanish. And I had to somehow ask them to maybe go somewhere else and come back, but they probably went to CFI and moved there. So I'm asking you to take responsibility, as you have been lately, at cleaning up properties. Just making sure, I, I get it that it's not you guys doing it. I get it that it's not the school's doing it. But we all in the community have to just take responsibility. So I would love to hear your plan for this year for cleaning up CFI and Roland Warner and just someone checking it before any mowers are allowed to go out there. Now cleanup is probably, uh, so July 12th is a Saturday. That's when the fireworks start. So July 15th is probably when we'll be out there cleaning up, right? So it's a Sunday, probably not many mowers, so that'll be easier. But just make sure those, and then if you, you have access to a lot more young people than I do, I get like the 60 and 70-year-olds who have time to come out and clean up and they're tired in an hour and I'm tired in three and, um, but there's a lot of areas. And I made you a map. I'll give you these. Unfortunately, the roads didn't print, but you can figure out where it is. I gave this to the city last year. I've got your schools and I got.
One minute. One minute.
Oh, thank you. And then I kind of ranked the worst parts. So if you would just consider doing that, I would appreciate it. Um, and, and just all of us taking part in cleaning up our, our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the public comment cards I have for this evening. We will head into our reports section of the agenda. Mrs. LaBarre, would you please share with us the teaching area and technology committee report?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Mrs. Putnam, uh, the TLT committee met on May 28th at 5:00 PM via Zoom. Uh, all of us attending were myself, Summer Putnam, and John Ben Wagner, and also Michelle Bradford and Mary Moss. Uh, we discussed the fifth and sixth grade schedules. Mrs. Bradford shared information regarding the student schedules for the new fifth and sixth grade campus at Roland Warner. In general, the schedule will be similar to the departmentalized structure that is currently in place at many of the elementary buildings. Key components of the new structure include the five, six campus will run on trimesters. Students will be placed on fifth and sixth grade teams with two to three teachers per team. Each teacher on the team will be teaching departmentalized content areas. Lunch and recess is by grade level and will be split with half of the grade level at lunch, while the other half is at recess, giving a total of four lunch and recess times. Electives will run on a weekly alternating go versus bolt schedule, allowing students to have four elective opportunities throughout the year. Go elective option will be for the year, while bolt electives will change each trimester. The student day will change slightly to 7:33 AM to 2:17 PM with a schedule that includes math and ELA sections will be 90-minute blocks of time, five days a week. Science and social studies sections will be taught in 45-minute blocks of time, five days a week. Zeus Zone, students will have one 45-minute enrichment or intervention period each day. Elective Hour, students will have one 45-minute elective period each day. Electives will run on a weekly alternating go versus bolt schedule, allowing students to have four elective opportunities throughout the year. Students will have a 35, 39-minute lunch recess period. AI Task Course, as schools prepare students for a future shaped by technology, integrating AI into education is not just beneficial, it is essential. Michelle Bradford explained that many teachers and administrators in the district have already began attending AI conferences and workshops. And an AI task force has been created consisting of administrators, principals, teachers, and learning coaches. She reviewed the identified principles, guidelines, and best practices of AI, including what AI can, it can and can't be used for in the educational setting. Next steps include creating district policies and guidelines of the usage of AI and offering PDs starting in November of 2025. We also discussed field trip, field trip requests, LHS Student Council to travel to Albion College in Albion, Michigan on July 20th through the 25th of this year, and the middle school cross-country tree team to travel to Camp Lael in Lepire, Michigan on August 4th through 6th of this year. The committee was in consensus of recommending full board approval at the June 4th board meeting and the meeting adjourned at 5:41 PM.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I just wanna say I'm excited about the AI part. It's such a hot topic and I deal with it on a daily basis, it seems. I do suggest looking between colleges and high school especially because we did the same and we're surprised that some districts actually have classes on AI, the whole class. So like the students take, so it's such a recognized thing, but such a slippery slope, but I'm excited about that.
Anyone else? Okay, Mrs. LaBarre, thank you. So that concludes our reports for this evening. We will go into our action items. We have, um, consent grouping, approval of board minutes of May 14, 2025, the overnight out-of-state bill trip for the Lepire High School Student Council to travel to Albion College in Albion, Michigan on July 20 to 25 of 2025. Overnight out-of-state bill trip request for the middle school cross-country team to Camp Lael in Lepire on August 4th through 6th, 2025. Set organizational meeting for the July 23rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Michigan High School Athletic Association 2025-2026 membership resolution and Michigan Association of School Lords 2025-2026 membership. Are there any, I guess anybody wishes to have removed from the consent grouping? Okay, I am hearing none. Can I make a motion?
I make a motion that the reading of the minutes and policies be waived and the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mr. Ben Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, probationary teacher resolution.
I want a motion that the probationary teacher performance resolution be approved as presented.
Aye.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on motion? Hearing none. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Bradford?
Mr. Ben Wagner?
Sorry.
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. So many doctors.
Jen's been promoted. He gives one speech.
Wouldn't say aye or thank you.
Um, okay, closed session.
I make a motion that the board move to close session to discuss the 2025-2027 LTA master agreement.
Support.
Motion and a support. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. We will head into closed session.